And posted in appropriate locations.
Thank you.
For Monday, August 2nd, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting. Mr. Dolan is absent. Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Juzwicki is absent. Mr. Luise?
Here.
Ms. Britto?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak? Here. Okay, at this time, we have to break off into an executive session. Shouldn't take more than how long?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes. So I have to ask everyone to please leave the room here.
And Mr. Chairman, I have to do the motion.
Ah, I need a motion for a decision.
So whereas the Jackson Township Planning Board is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the planning board to discuss in a session not open to the public certain matters relating to the item or items authorized by NJSA 10:4 and designated as follows, both matters of litigation, the Jackson Trails litigation and the Ella Jackson North and South litigation, I would also inform the public that action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved by the Jackson Township Planning Board that these items are ripe for executive session. Now you need a motion in a second, sorry.
We've got a motion over here and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry if everyone... Excellent. Okay, this evening, there are no resolutions that are ready. Minutes, we're gonna pass five minutes for this evening. It's the time. So I need a amended agenda for this evening, an amended resolution for Jackson Trails LLC and Jackson Southeast. And I'll turn this over to...
Alright, so there's a suggested motion up for him. Mr. Wall, can you make that motion, please, or affirm what the councilman said?
I make a motion that we amend the agenda according to a resolution set forth by the Planning Board attorney that's discussing executive session.
Yeah, we will call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hudak and members of the board. As indicated, when the board went into executive session, there might be action taken. One of the matters discussed was the Jackson Trails litigation. The board discussed, and I understand that the board will contemplate a motion regarding the following resolution by title, Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township, this is resolution, proposed resolution 2021-16, Resolution of the Planning Board of Township of Jackson County, Motion State of New Jersey, indicating a willingness to grant preliminary major subdivision and site plan approval and conditional use approval for the project known as Jackson Trails LLC along Hope Chapel Road encompassing block 23001, lots 22 and 29.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Correct.
For that?
Second.
Whoa.
Mr. Riker is abstaining, he's not participating. He'll make that announcement, yes.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
And Mr. Hudak, the chairman, the other matter is really more in line with an amendment to the agenda. It was a carry from the last meeting, didn't make it on the print in agenda, but it's a resolution to amend the Jackson Southeast, addressing several scribners errors. You all had had that copy last meeting. It was carried just to verify with Mr., excuse me, Mr. Peters and Mr. Cle that we didn't miss anything further, quite frankly. I just asked simply for a motion to approve that amendment.
Whoa.
Second.
We'll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Southeast?
Yeah.
Southeast.
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Okay, any other legal matters?
Mr. Chairman, the only other legal matter I can make an announcement with here is, as has been indicated, and the board is well aware that through our office, our office has filed an objection to three of the four counts filed against the Planning Board, Zoning Board, and by reference, the municipality alleging certain types of discrimination. That motion is asking the court to dismiss three of the four counts lodged against the municipality. The return date of that motion is September 10th.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, I apologize for all the delays. There's so much lead we use that goes on. I appreciate your patience. Without further ado, our first application this evening is block 22301, lots 5, 6, and 16, Whitesville Business Park. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for preliminary final major site plan approval. The applicant is proposing to construct a 15,000 square foot warehouse building and one 78,300 square foot warehouse building. There's an existing 44,000, 45,000 square foot multi-tenant building that's designated to remain. So there should be some testimony as far as the utilization or the operations of the proposed buildings, as well as what's going on in the existing building. The project's located directly, I'll call it, south or east of a project that the board had previously approved that's under construction. This is very similar to that application. The app, it does fall within the Pine Lands area, and they have provided a certificate of filing, and the only comment from that certificate of filing was they had to adhere to a 240-foot wetlands buffer. So of course, some testimony from the applicant that to make sure that that's going to happen. The applicant has provided an environmental impact statement, so we should have some testimony from the applicant as far as the findings and the conclusions of that report, and of course, any comments that have been received from the local environmental commission. The project will connect the public water and sewer, and as I indicated, we should have some testimony from the applicant regarding the proposed usage of the warehouse building. And maybe specifically focusing on the existing building which is designated to remain. The applicant is requesting a waiver from a traffic impact analysis, so some testimony from the applicant in support of that waiver request. There's a two-way driveway connection proposed to Whitesville Road, that's a county facility, so review and approval of that will be subject to the county planning board. There is one design exception regarding the length of the entrance drive into the site, 100 feet required and 70 feet provided, so some testimony from the applicant in support of that design waiver exception. There's also an existing driveway, again, at the southern end of the site that encroaches onto the property, so an indication from the applicant as to what's proposed for that existing driveway connection. Based on the warehouse use in the two proposed buildings, parking is compliant with ordinance standards, although there's been no analysis of the existing building, what's there. And it appears that there might be 50 stalls devoted to those uses in that building, but some testimony from the applicant as to exactly what's happening in that building and if the parking is adequate. There's a, we reviewed the drainage proposals and take no exception. Your applicant has submitted architecturals to the board. I think maybe a primary concern is what kind of architectural treatments are clapping into the existing building. Coming back from a pre-construction meeting at the town this afternoon, we really couldn't help but notice the rusted, somewhat unsightly appearance of the existing building. So some testimony from the applicant, what kind of upgrades are proposed for that existing building. There is a sign variance required where a ground sign is permitted and are not permitted, the ground signs proposed. I ran out of gas, and anything else, I'll pick up.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated July 26th of this year. I did see in the last few weeks that a traffic impact analysis was submitted to the board. Looks like the board got it on the 23rd, so we asked Mr. Kennel to go through it since I don't think board members or the board professionals had an opportunity to comment on the record yet regarding it, but in point of fact, it appears that one was submitted. I'm not sure if it was distributed to board members. The site's in the PM1 Pine Lands Manufacturing Zone, as Mr. Cleid indicated, since there's a number of things permitted in the Pine Lands Manufacturing Zone, some discussion about the proposed use of the site. On our report, on pages four and five, there are other provisions that relate to the PM1 Zone. And understand, the PM1 Zone probably hadn't been reconciled in 20-odd years, so I'd asked Mr. Borden to take some time and just go through some of the other provisions and requirements section of the ordinance as it relates to the site. I would, from a historic perspective, let the board know that we were able to find resolutions affecting the development of the property going back into the late 70s. So I suspect that this building's probably 40, 45 years old. So it's been here a while, it has approvals, they've been back before boards in between, and they're here again. As we go through the testimony, we'd ask for some comments regarding any wall signage for the individual new buildings, which may or may not be ready at this point with or without a tenant, or some testimony that indicates that they're not requesting any wall sign variance. Again, Mr. Kennel had submitted a traffic impact statement, but we have a number of comments with regards to the circulation of the site. It would warrant some testimony. On page 10, in our landscaping comments, there may be the need for a buffer as it abuts the PM1 Zone, and we asked Mr. Borden to give us some testimony about that. And the last initial comment that I can think of would be a statement from the applicant whether phasing is required or proposed for the site, and if it is, we'd have to figure out what needs to be done for Phase 1, Phase 2, as such. That's all.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jan Woders. Excuse me. I'm a partner with the firm of Bathgate, Wagner &amp; Wolf in Lakewood, New Jersey, and I represent the applicant, Whitesville Business Park LLC. As indicated by the professionals, the applicant owns lots 5, 6, and 16 of block 22301, and has a street address of 370 Whitesville Road. The property is located on the southerly side of Whitesville Road, directly opposite White Road with, within the PM1 zoning district. The site's been previously developed for many years with a one-story, 44,000-square-foot distribution light industrial building. The applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval in order to construct two buildings, a 19,940-square-foot warehouse building and a larger 78,300-square-foot warehouse distribution manufacturing building. The existing 44,000-square-foot building, multi-tenanted, will remain. There will be additional site improvements, including a two, a new two-way driveway connection to Whitesville Road, off-street parking, lighting, landscaping, stormwater management facilities, as well as all typical site plan improvements, variances. At this time, I would like to call my first witness, Mr. Ian Borden of Professional Design Services, who will testify as to the technical aspects of the application.
Mr. Borden, good evening. If you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, Mr. Woders gave your affiliation, but brief, through the chairman, brief word, dear, as to your credentials?
Certainly. Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey, graduate of Rutgers University in 1982, working in the planning and engineering field since 1983, President of PDS since 1996, and a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Thank you. Anthony, if you don't mind, pull up that first page. I had pre-marked five exhibits. I believe reduced size color copies were given to each board member, but we have them on the screen. Thank you, Anthony.
And I should say, actually, since I said something specifically, thank you for doing that.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
As Janet indicated, the property is located along Whitesville Road, containing blocks 5, 6, and 16. The property does contain 40, 20.5 acres, I'm sorry. Exhibit A1 that's on the screen is an aerial photograph dated just a few months ago, and the property is outlined in yellow. Whitesville Road runs basically top to bottom in the center of the map with north being, you can see the north arrow to the top right.
Mr. Borden, would it be helpful in applications like this, if you would also overlay the amount of this property that is going to be disturbed with the buildings? You see, when you look at this, you see a lot of trees and stuff.
Yes.
And I'd like to get an idea of what's going to be disturbed.
That's a good idea. We'll do that in the future.
Is this going to be fair to the...
No. Not even close. As Mr. Cle had noted, I believe it was Mr. Cle, there are significant wetland buffers on the property, and I'll get into that as we go through the exhibits. As noted, there is an existing multi-tenant industrial building which is on the north side of the project, containing actually two existing driveways to Whitesville Road. The building contains approximately 45,000 square feet, has existed on the site for more than 40 years. It was built prior to 1980. The site, getting into some just description of the environmental constraints that we have, not shown on the property, but you can see in the aerial, the main branch of the Toms River is on the very far left edge of the map. There is a strip of wetlands that extends up across the southern boundary. The next exhibit will show the extents of the wetland buffers, but we have, of the 20 acres, approximately nine acres is contained within the wetland buffer. There is actually very little wetlands on the property. The only part of the property that's wetlands, as shown on the site plan, is really the very tip of the southern corner, but because we're in Pine Lands, and I'll get into that in a second, Pine Lands requires a 240-foot buffer from the wetlands along the southern boundary, and a 600-foot buffer to the main branch of the Toms River. That's part of the expanded upland wildlife corridor that the board members may or may not remember, but that's a special buffer that only applies in Jackson Township along the main branch of the Toms River in the Pine Lands. We are proposing, if you don't mind going to the next one, Anthony, please. This is the site plan that was submitted, so we just put it up on the screen, the, maybe while we're on the environmental. You could see that this 600-foot buffer is this sweeping line to the left. Again, it's the same orientation as the aerial. North is up to the right, Whitesville Road runs top to bottom. And then the wetland line that you could see here, and then you have the 240-foot buffer that wraps around the wetlands. Those buffers, by the way, were approved, as well as delineation of the wetlands by the Pine Lands Commission as part of our certificate of filing. But basically, what we're proposing on the site, and I would note, it was noted in the planners' review, and I gotta give you credit, Ernie, I don't know how you found that, because that 1998 file, because interestingly, this is one of the first projects that PDS ever did. In 1997, we did our first project in Jackson, which was this project, which is almost identical to this proposal. That project was approved in 1998, obviously has expired, but just, it's interesting to me at least. But we have two buildings...
Planning Board keeps great records.
I'm sorry?
Planning Board Office keeps great records.
Apparently, they do, because that was pretty amazing. Here on the north part of the project, you see in the light gray shade, that's the existing multi-tenant building. And we are proposing two separate buildings. One is closest to Whitesville Road is a five-unit multi-tenant building containing 14,900 square feet. Actually, I skipped over the fact that it was noted in the previous comments that the site is located in the PM1 industrial zone. And I'm sure, I've testified to the board, I believe, in the PM1 Zone, but mostly in other zones, but this is in the regional growth land use management area of the Pine Lands Commission and the CMP. The CMP was adopted in 1981. This zone was adopted by Jackson Township, the PM1 Zone, in 1982 as one of the first municipalities to be certified in Pine Lands, and the zoning, the zone, the PM1 Zone, has remained unchanged in the last 40 years. But the regional growth zone is defined by the CMP as areas of existing growth capable of accommodating regional growth influences. But what we have now, trying to implement the PM1 Zone, again, Phase 1 is a 14,900-square-foot multi-five-unit multi-tenant building that is intended to be in contractors' office, warehouse, and shop. These uses are permitted under the PM1 Zone under 244-97A1 and 5, 1 being office, 5 being And then Building 2 is in the rear of the site, and that is a 78,300-square-foot single, both of these buildings are single-story warehouse building, and that is permitted, consistent again with 244-97A5 warehouses are permitted. Just as some statements, we did provide a statement of operations, but a couple of statements just to make sure they're clearly on the record, that all of the operations on these two proposed buildings will occur within the proposed buildings. There is no outdoor storage proposed. There is no manufacturing nor retail sales proposed. The units will be rented, not sold. I know the planners, I believe, letter had, it was, or the existing building, again, which predates the zoning ordinance, does have some outdoor storage associated with it, but that's a use that predates the, that predates the zoning ordinance. So we're not proposing to make any changes to the existing building nor the tenancy of those buildings.
Mr. Borden, sorry to interrupt, and through the chairman, so one suggestion, which I know Mr. Borden is used to, should the board approve, can you update the plan to show where that outdoor storage at least currently exists?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Just as a, the question was raised in the review, under the PM1 Zone, you're entitled to do an industrial park if you're more than 20 acres. That would be an industrial, industrial park would be creating smaller lots. The ordinance allows lots, I believe, as small as two acres with a public road. We're not proposing an industrial park. Again, we're just proposing to expand the existing site with the current owner and maintain it as a single lot. Yeah, I think the recommendation was made in the planners' review to consolidate, and I don't believe we'd have any objection to that. Again, it's three existing lots, but that's just the way the tax map was. There's no rhyme or reason for that. The site, if you could blow up, expand this maybe a little bit, Anthony, right in this area? That's perfect, thank you. The site, as I mentioned, has an existing driveway to Whitesville Road. That's the active driveway that's used by the existing building. We are proposing to maintain that same existing driveway. There is a second driveway that's currently unused, but it's still physically present up in this area, north of the existing driveway, that we have proposed to eliminate. We'll remove that, just, it's not being used now, but it'll be removed and landscaped. The existing driveway is located approximately 90 feet south of the White Road intersection, which is on the right, on the east side of Whitesville Road. As far as parking goes for the two buildings, we have a total number of parking required for the two buildings is 70 spaces. We propose 76, 20 for Building 1 and 56 for Building 2. To count those parking, I think there was some different numbers in some of the reviews. We did count the loading areas as part of the parking provided. I think that's the reason for maybe the discrepancy. There are four ADA spaces provided, two for each building. Each of the buildings contain adequate loading. In the case of Building 1, again, this is intended for small contractors, be it HVAC, plumbing, electrical, that type of thing. So this, this portion of the site is not designed for large semi-trucks. They will not be permitted in there because they just won't fit. Mr. Kennel, I'm sure, will testify to that, but we have basically garage doors in the rear of the building for use by the tenants. So we have loading there, and then in the larger warehouse building, we have loading docks along the southern side of the building. So we do provide the loading. None of the loading activities for the two new buildings. We utilize the existing facilities, and obviously, nor will they be permitted to do so on Whitesville The site has an impervious coverage of 39% where 50% is permitted, so we're well under the permitted maximum. As I noted, about approximately nine acres of the site is wetland buffer, so that area will not be developed. I'm gonna ask you to skip, Anthony, if you could go to the, to two more, to A4, please. I'm kinda doing this out of order in my notes. Maybe just reduce that back out so we have a full screen. So these are architectural plans were provided to the board, black and white architectural plans. These are colored renderings that the architect prepared for us. So this, this, you're looking at the view of Building 1, looking from Whitesville Road. The buildings, both, let me just run through these real quick, and if you don't mind, that's, this is A4. If you don't mind, the next one, Anthony.
I'll stop you right there for a minute. I'm looking at these architectural drawings, and I'm telling you, I could've done better with an ad sketch. These things, that is about as bland as can be, number one. Number two, I don't see one iota of landscape in these.
Well, let me get into the landscape inside. The architect prepared these, so I, I guess he didn't use our landscape plan when he did them, but I'll pass that on.
You know, he's calling it a rendering, and you have to include a couple of trees and shrubs, and also the buildings themselves. I mean, you talk about bland, is there anything that can be done with these? And also the existing buildings? Are any improvements gonna be done to the existing buildings?
We had not proposed any... We, we have not proposed any improvement to the existing buildings.
Whoa, that's, that's... Go ahead, yes.
That was my thought, the first thing I thought, because I go out there today, and that's an old building, and it's, it's in disrepair. And I, I would suggest, as business people, even thinking about the integrity, the architectural integrity among of the three buildings, to go from one lock is going, and you have to drive by the other, old, decrepit, even if it's just a facade, to maybe integrate.
I understand, we'll pass that on. My client is, is here, he's heard that, and we'll discuss that with the architect. I understand, I've heard it loud and clear. This is a view from the, from the back of Building 1, looking at what I described as the contractor, garage doors. If you don't mind, that's A5. If you don't mind, Anthony, the next one. And this is A6, the warehouse building in the back, looking from the south, from the wetland buffer, looking towards the north. I'm sorry, this is looking from the north to the south, I'm sorry. This is the parking area that's along the north side of the building. If you don't mind, the last one, we'll just wrap that up. And this is the view from the buffer, looking at the loading areas, looking to the north. So... If you don't mind, Anthony, go to, go up to A, the third page. We, we prepared this colored rendering because we have some C variances that we're requesting for Building 1. This is the blow-up of Building 1 that shows the existing driveway to the top of the, to the north. Again, Whitesville Road runs top to bottom on the right side, and we are requesting variances for the required front yard setback in, in this zone on Whitesville Road is 100 foot. This building is proposed to be offsets 46.8 feet. The minimum parking setback along Whitesville Road is 20 feet, we're proposing 10.5 feet. And the zone also requires a 100-foot buffer strip required along Whitesville Road, where we have a residential zone located either adjoining or across the street, and we're proposing 10.5 feet along Whitesville Road again. I'm sorry, Anthony, could you go back to A1? I, I left out something when I was reviewing that. We, we added the zone, the surrounding zoning information. I didn't describe the surrounding uses when I was doing my initial looking at this. So the entire west side of Whitesville Road, to the left of the map, is in the PM1 zone. The industrial zone, which is, the Whitesville Road forms the Pine Lands boundary in Jackson, so the east or right side of the road are not in Pine Lands. You have the industrial zone to, substantially to our east, basically the entire corner of the town, from, from where this line is shown, to all the way to Faraday, is all industrial zone. And then across the street from us is a small portion of R1 zone. Unfortunately, what I cut off when I prepared this is, there's a neighborhood commercial zone that's located just off the map. So the amount of residential zone that borders on Whitesville Road is very small. Most of the residential uses are on the north side of White Road, as you can see, with the houses and some cul-de-sacs. But the, the PM1 zone requires that where we are located, particularly across the street from residential, we're required to provide that 100-foot screening strip. Currently, that front of the property, that Building 1 is proposed in, as you can see on this aerial, is an open field. There is no existing vegetation in that area. So we are proposing, if you don't mind, Anthony, go to A3 now. What we are proposing is a very heavily landscaped evergreen buffer along the road. And I would add that, that the existing area between Whitesville Road and the existing building is also a lawn with that driveway that I noted that we're, we're gonna abandon and vegetate. So we're proposing evergreen buffer plantings along both sides of the access road, basically to create an evergreen screen from the entire project from Whitesville Road, not just the portion that we're seeking the variance for. I'll get into some planning testimony on the variances in a moment, just to wrap up some, some descriptions of the site plan. As noted in the review, we are proposing a ground sign. The ground sign does conform to the height, setback area, and landscape requirements of the zone. The, a zone is permitted in the PM1 zone pursuant to 197B4. The sign has an area of 24 square feet and a height of 6 feet. There was a statement in some of the reviews about potentially the signs being prohibited per a different section of the ordinance, which relates to Pine Lands requirements, which is 244-79. But when you read that carefully, that the sentence that is being questioned, only prohibit signs that relate to off-site advertising. In other words, you're not allowed to do an off-site advertising sign in Pine Lands. So my opinion that that ordinance does not prohibit signs, and, and we are permitted to have a ground sign. I would use frankly, as an example of that, just north of this, the adjoining property to the north of this site in the PM1 zone is a project that this board approved that is under construction called Whitesville Commons. I don't know if you recall, but that's a large 100,000 square foot office complex, and, and that site was approved with a ground sign, consistent with these same requirements. We do propose a couple last site plan items. We do propose refuse enclosure on each of, on each of the buildings. Each of them are behind the respective building. Both will be enclosed with masonry walls, having a minimum height of 5 feet, and will comply. I know there were some questions raised in the letters about the landscaping and setback requirements. Any necessary revisions we made to ensure they comply. Neither of these refuse enclosures are visible from Whitesville Road, they're both located behind the respective buildings, 1 and 2. And so the design and screening of each of those enclosures will comply with the ordinance requirements. As far as some general site utilities, currently, the site has, has a well, private water, and a septic system. Obviously, the, the building has been built, as I said, since even before the 70s, potentially, and since that date, approximately 10 years ago, there has been water and sewer installed in Whitesville Road. There's both a 12-inch water main and a 12-inch gravity sewer line. It is our proposal to connect to each of those, and that would include the existing building. So we're proposing to put the existing building, as well as the two proposed buildings, on public water. We would, we would hope to put them on public sewer, although I, I should place on the record that the, the capacity of the sewer is questionable per the Jackson MUA. Under an interlocal agreement that they have with the Toms River MUA, there is limited capacity available to Jackson, and it is questionable if we will have capacity for this project. This project has very small flows, because it's industrial, but we're, we're discussing that with the MUA. So for the record, we hope to have it in the public sewer, but if that is not an option, we may be required to do an individual disposal system. Public water will not be used for irrigation for landscaped areas. We'll maintain a well to supply irrigation water. That's a standard requirement of the Jackson Township MUA. We do have a stormwater management basin proposed for each of the buildings. Mr. McFarlane will give some testimony on the design of those. But those stormwater areas will be owned and maintained by the applicant. And we, we do agree to conform to the other technical requirements in the review letters. Couple things that I heard from the professionals today that I just want to address as far as the EIS. My, my office, myself, had prepared an EIS. I actually prepared the original EIS in 1997 as well. The site, obviously, a critical part of the project has been identifying the wetlands, the wetland buffers, and the areas that we cannot develop. So otherwise, the soils are, are good, we comply with the wetland buffers. We have received a certificate of filing from the Pine Lands Commission that is consistent with all of the provisions of their requirements. And while that completed my description of the site, Ernie had asked to address some of the other items in the ordinance in Page 4 and 5 of his letter, so I just want to do that very quickly. Looking at Page 5, I addressed the buffer. Item 4 is the public sewer, I did address that. Statement is made that we're required to set aside a minimum 20% of the area for landscaping, and there's nearly 50% of the property that is preserved in wetland buffers, so I believe we certainly comply with that. In fact, that all industrial activity processes must take place within a completely enclosed building. I had testified that all activities in the new buildings will be performed indoors, there'll be no outdoor storage of the new buildings. And then it talks about the industrial parks, which I said, we're not doing streets, and we're not doing the industrial park. So I, hopefully, I addressed all those items. The last one is water. We are proposing public water. And otherwise, we comply with all other performance standards of the, of the PM1 zone. So we, we have the three C variances I testified to. And it is proposed that these be considered under the C2 variance criteria. Obviously, this is not a hardship. This is a new development. And the C2, of course, is the, the benefits outweigh the detriments variance. So it's required for us to prove that the need for the variance falls within the separate specific purposes of the municipal land use law. My opinion, the uses, as guided by the, by the Pine Lands CMP that I'd mentioned earlier, as well as the municipal master plan, the 2009 master plan specifically encourages non-residential commercial industrial uses in the PM1 zone. And I believe we meet the purposes of zoning under A, C, G, I, and K. I think the board is familiar with those, that I don't need to repeat them, I can if, if needed. And in my opinion, the proposed development of Building 1, we're talking about Building 1 here, particularly these variances that are none associated with Building 2, ensures that there'll be no substantial detriment to the public good, and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Because of the encouragement of development under the Pine Lands CMP and Township Master Plan, the fact that no buffer exists for the existing building, as I testified, which encompasses approximately half the site as visible from Whitesville Road, and we are proposing to buffer the existing building where it's not required. And of course, that buffer, enhanced buffer that would extend across the site frontage of Building 1, in my opinion, the buffer that we provide is substantially greater than if we were to simply preserve 100 feet, because that 100 feet is open field. The need for the variance is driven in large part because of the environmental constraints and the preservation of those, being the 240-foot buffer, which if you look at A3 here, you see the dash line, that is the 240-foot buffer line. In fact, that wetland is, is partly created because of a county drainage system built more than 40 years ago that outlets on my client's property and, and creates some, some hydrology. We have purposely developed Building 1 as a lower intense use, considerate of the setback as a single or a, the smaller contractor office warehouse with smaller contractors. We purposely did that to, to lessen the intensity of this area. And that's evidenced by the fact that we, again, have the employee parking in the front only, all the loading for the garage doors is in the back, shielded by the building from the road. The, this building, both buildings, in fact, have been designed with a maximum height much lower than permitted by the ordinance. The ordinance allows 50 feet, we're proposing a maximum height of 34 feet. And again, we have the heavy evergreen screening strip that will, in my opinion, completely shield the entire project from Whitesville Road. And then to conclude my testimony, we have four design waivers. The first, I think all of them were noted in the review letters, but the first is the, the setback of an entrance drive from Whitesville Road. Here, we have the existing driveway to Whitesville Road, we have an existing access from an internal drive located where I'm pointing at the existing building, which is less than 100 feet. It's a, it's 60 feet from, from Whitesville Road. We are proposing a new ingress driveway at the same location. And again, that, that ingress drive would be for the least intensive use of the site, that building again, one. Secondly, we have under two, these are all under 244-197, the large parking area requirements. It was noted that we have parking along the main access drive. This, the main access drive being the existing drive that runs along the existing building, and we have parking noted, as I'm describing, showing here, that, that have access to the major circulation drive. That is the way the site operates today. Those, that parking is all done off of that main driveway today, so we don't believe we're changing that, although we certainly are adding intensity to the driveway for the rear building, but I believe it'd be impractical not to have that parking on the main drive. And the, it was noted under 244- Is that on? Okay. Light's not on. That the ordinance requires a setback from an existing public street on the opposite side of a road, a separation of 100 feet. The center lines of the, of White Road and the existing driveway is 90 feet. We are now proposing sidewalk along Whitesville Road. That is consistent with the approval granted to our north for Whitesville Commons. Of course, we would offer to pay in lieu of, to the pedestrian safety fund. That's my boring, steep deal for the night. Can you put up A2, please, Anthony? Oh, A2, please, the second sheet, please, I'm sorry. Right there? What we were trying to, this is a loading area here in Building 2, and we were trying to get them to make a more refined driveway entrance, but, yeah, we could eliminate that, just, no. We, we could eliminate that. Yeah, we had designed those, we, we are rebuilding those radii to a 50-foot radius. It would diminish the variance, it wouldn't eliminate it, but certainly would add 20 feet, it would go from 46 to 66. No, I, I heard you. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Camp.
If I could go back to the architectural, please. This is a major road running from Toms River into Jackson. It's a heavily traveled road. And I'd like to see every building have some character- every building have some character. I know it's a warehouse, but it seems that the portion facing Whitesville Road and the entry portion, some imagination and some kind of look. You know, it's just so-
We heard you loud, we heard the chairman loud and clear, so, when you, so we will bring that back to the architect.
Can you, can we talk about the existing buildings? I'm concerned about their look and whether, you know, why they're not being improved.
Well, you asked that. That's part of your architectural question that I heard. What I heard is two parts. One is, you got to make these proposed buildings look better, and two, do something with the existing building to make it look like the other two new buildings. That's what I heard.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Peters. I think the word you may be looking for is uninspired. And when you're looking for relief from a board, to also come in uninspiring is, might be what you're looking for. The history of the zoning, the assumption is that it was zoned that way for a reason, right?
It's in the Pine Lands area, yes.
If this were a conforming application, what would it look like? How many square feet would be in there? What might it be looked like? What might it look like if it were coming in with no request for relief?
Well, the front building would be about half the size.
Okay.
Just as simple as that. It'd be set back 100 feet. They're setting it back a little less than 50 feet.
So what's the point in approving that? I'm trying to just understand, like, what's the, well, if it was zoned for, if there were some, if there was a process put in place by the governing body or the entities, you know, when this were put in place for a reason, what would be the compelling interest for the public to approve what's an uninspiring design for an increase in development?
Well, there may not be, but I try not to testify for the applicant, but certainly in the Pine Lands Manufacturing Zone, the creation of ratables would be a point that they could use to reconcile the variance relief. You may consider, given the age of the Pine Lands Manufacturing Zone, whether or not it anticipated wetlands as are delineated some years later in 2021 and how they impact the site. But yes, a black letter law reading, there's 100-foot setback, most of the existing buildings setback 100 feet. This, this sounds like yield. We can get the most we can by paralleling the frontage of the street and staying away from the wetlands. So, there's a, there's a give and take in the size of the property, the amount of yield that could be generated from the property and the need for variance relief to accommodate that, but that's where the board gets to reconcile that relief with things that are important, such as, you know, a building that would be set back 100 feet with appropriate landscaping. May not be, may not have to worry so much about the aesthetics of the building. If the building's going to be set back 50 feet, and I don't know if there was an upgraded, updated landscape plan, but the current landscape plan shows nine trees along 360-foot a frontage where the building's going to be. That's one every 40 feet. That's not heavily landscaped. And there's three trees along the existing building, along the frontage. So, we haven't gotten to the point of reconciling what heavily landscaped is, but one tree every 40 feet, when you have a parking area that's 10 foot back from the right of way and a building that's 50 feet back from the right of way, I think there's some room to discuss alternatives that would serve both purposes.
Just one follow-up question. Is there any particular reason why, and you may have looked at in your review, that there's less impervious coverage and you go vertical to the, what the zone allowed is 50 feet, if I heard correctly? Why not consolidate the square footage and go up? Unless it's not 50 feet? And if they're showing 34, 35 feet, I think, why not go up and then reduce the footprint and perhaps increase the circulation for the truck traffic and things like that? Or is that, would that not be sound planning?
I'm not sure that it would be up to the applicant to decide whether or not they could build what may be referred to as two-story warehousing or two-story, a two-story permitted use in the PM zone. But certainly going vertical could limit the amount of impervious on the site, to the extent that the applicant finds that marketable. I can't speak for them, but that's certainly an alternative in terms of the board reconciling the variance relief that's necessary and the intensity of use. And I think we can put things like the landscaping and the architecture of the building on the table to reconcile those concerns for the betterment of the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters, refresh my memory. Didn't we have a couple of applications where we requested that their setbacks be in line with the other surrounding properties with a big lineup? So that you have some continuity? And wouldn't that be the same as the existing buildings that were there and then the proposed warehouse that's going right next to it?
Well-
Wouldn't that be a better plan, would be in line with that?
Often proofs are given that reconcile what's being proposed with what exists in the neighborhood or in the zone. So, if, if the board wishes the applicant to give more testimony as it relates to that, that's a fair request. Understanding that Mr. Borden did testify that this is the edge of the Pine Lands, so Pine Lands is on one side of the street, and then there is a bit of a hodgepodge of existing zones on the opposite side of the street that are non-Pine Lands zones. But that responsibility to reconcile those is the applicant's and not the board's.
Anybody else?
Mr. Borden, I'd like to comment on your environmental work and your setbacks. You got it right. I happen to travel over quite a bit, and I can tell you, on the adjacent property that's under construction, where the court is, the lawn is kind of like burned, it's kind of like the wall. And I worked last Saturday, I had the opportunity to see the family going through. The roof does get reused on a protective condition. I would kind of think that sidewalks are anything. I can tell you every morning when I go to work and I'm south on Whitesville, the guys that are working in the stair factory in that larger building are headed down to the gas station to get their coffee. So, I would recommend that we do the sidewalks, because there is a special community and there's a work protection community. I would agree that the building needs to, Building One needs to be smaller than the work. I know your strength with the challenges of the PMZ zone. I get it completely, much more than you could ever imagine, but that setting so close to the road and you have the landscaping and whatnot, I don't think is the right move, because to come out of that park on a Friday afternoon with all the traffic, it's already tough to get in and out of Whitesville Road to see, and I think it's going to be an equal challenge to come out of that industrial park. I would excuse you, that this new center at the C, what's coming more about on Whitesville Road? You know, you're stuck with the challenge and the existing curbs. I get it. My recommendation would be to make that first blue form. The other comment I'm going to make is, we're talking about the building to order this building. It's overgrown. It has, you know, six-foot fences with barbed wire up over from whatever. Obviously, all that needs to go, and the long side of the building that faces more, that needs enough, you know? We have a new office community next door, and that's only, it really needs a lot of that. I don't know what the gear is on the roof, but it looks like antique, antiquated dust blockers and all that really, it needs to go. It'd be something as simple as putting a metal roof on the building with some color, some fresh paint and jazz. That's why it's, that's just my recommendation.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple. It may be more of an engineering issue, but the ordinance requires perimeter curbing around all parking and driveway areas. They have it in the front, but they don't have it in the back. I think that's more of an engineering-
Yeah, we'll provide that.
-testimony on that. Going back to the aligning on the buildings, consistency of setbacks, in, I believe, PDS did the approval for the property to the, I'll call to the north.
We did, yes.
Do you recall if there was a setback variance granted for that? Because I know the existing buildings goes up, is going up now, but I'm sure it's more than 50 foot back.
I'm going by memory here, but I believe we did set that building back 100 feet.
Okay, so speaking to consistency of the setbacks, I think you've now received the message as far as the existing architecturals and the building upgrades there. Along with that, will we be getting any type of landscaping, resurfacing, paving, seal coating, or something of the, around the existing building?
We'll, we'll address that with the architectural work.
Okay. And I, I think you had indicated that we'll have delineated where the outdoor storage is for that existing building.
Yes.
But there's none proposed for the, for the two new buildings.
That's correct.
There's a 240-foot wetland buffer that's indicated on the plan, but I'm reading the plan as that we have parking, parking and driveway encroaching into that 240-foot wetland buffer. Am I reading that wrong?
That is correct. There's actually more, we're actually reducing the the, the existing building and its site improvements predated the Pine Lands Commission, right? The Pine Lands Commission came into being, the CMP in 1981, and that site was developed before 1980. But what we are doing with this site plan is we are shortening up that disturbance back. We're not completely eliminating any overlap into the buffer, but we're lessening it greatly. But the areas that we're maintaining, if you look at sheet three of the site plan or A, two, or two that's on the screen, there is some parking that's going to remain, but you'll notice that there are some existing gravel areas that are being removed. Yes. Right. And Pine Lands has reviewed all of that and has accepted that as part of the certificate of filing.
But I think they've also indicated that you're going to maintain a 240-foot wetland buffer.
For the proposed development, for the two new buildings.
Can we get that-
I'll clarify that.
Okay. And I think there was some testimony regarding a contractor's warehouse, that it's going to be, you know, in the front building and maybe-
Yes.
All the plans that I'm looking at just say warehouse, and I'm looking at the architecturals, and I'm not seeing any office. I'm just seeing straight warehouse. So if there's an office component, I would think that that should be included in the parking analysis.
We'll, we'll check with the architect on that. I don't know that there is any office component, but I'll go check with the architect.
And that's what the architect will say, that that's kind of what all the plans you show is just warehouse. But if I'm hearing contractors, you know, no office warehouse, then I think some of these buildings has some office component to them.
Well, when it, I think, when I, when, certainly when I describe office contractor warehouse, these are typically sole proprietor businesses that an office might be a chair, you know? It's not a formal office, per se, like at least office. Just a place to put a computer.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's all for now.
Thank you. Just one quick question for Mr. Peters. The parking, we have adequate spaces between all these existing buildings, the new proposed buildings. Does this all calculate out?
As of yet, the answer is no. I was going to wait until we heard from the traffic consultant. Mr. Borden had indicated that for the new building, 70 spaces are required, I'm sorry, 70 spaces are required and 76 are provided. He didn't testify to the existing building. So, at some point, you have to reconcile that, because unless someone's going to draw a big line on the plan that says, Building One can park here and Building Two can park here, there are going to be areas of overlap that, so at some point through the testimony, unless Mr. Borden wants to testify to it, you know, at some point, we'll need to reconcile that. That didn't go away, just because we didn't hear testimony yet.
I don't think that's an option. It has to be a combined report.
Understood. Again, I don't know that we, we've heard testimony yet, so I was going to wait until we got through the traffic portion of the application and come back to it then.
Well, I sort of, Mr. Chairman, in line with Mr. Peters, and I don't know if it's for Mr. Borden or if it's subsequent, but I was just looking for some testimony ultimately, at least, to reconcile Resolution 9807 and the amendment to now this final site plan. So, for instance, I'm just flipping through. It reports, as your, as your plans report, that the existing building was 44,990 square feet, at least as of 1998. The hours of operation were 7:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m., that there were seven tenants in that building, at least in 1998. And I couldn't tell from the resolution how much parking was associated at that particular time. So, using Mr. Peters's words, it just has to be reconciled, because ultimately, with the consolidation of the lots, there, it's a unified, it's a unified site plan.
I missed that part of my testimony, but yes, as we're analyzing the existing building for architectural and with storage, identifying the storage, we'll also analyze it for parking. That was a request made in Ernie's letter, and we will address that as well as part of analyzing the existing site. So, we'll come back with a comprehensive parking inclusive of the existing building.
Anyone else?
Real quick, with additional landscaping throughout the site?
Yeah, that exhibit that I showed is landscaping that we've developing now. We will include that in any revised information we send back.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional witnesses, sir?
Yes. I have a second witness, Scott Kennel, from McDonough Ray Associates, who's going to testify as to his traffic plan. Now, we understand that there may be some changes to the parking configuration as part of that, but I think at least let him testify as to the plan that he's prepared to date.
Thank you for raising your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and through the chair, brief credentials?
Yes, Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquon. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've been testified before this board, as well as the Jackson's zoning board, on many occasions, as well as in 100 other municipalities and over 1,000 applications. I've also been qualified by New Jersey Superior Court on three matters, three land use matters as a traffic expert.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennel, did you cause to have prepared a traffic impact analysis with regard to this project? And if so, would you please describe that to the board?
Yes. My office prepared a traffic impact study dated April 13 of this year, and that was submitted to the board. It took into consideration they proposed buildings on this site. The traffic analysis included the conduct of traffic counts on Whitesville Road at the site access to inventory, at least the existing traffic loads generated by the 45,000-square-foot building. The counts of the site driveway were conducted in February of 2021. Our office had traffic counts from January of 2020, pre-COVID restrictions, and in review of the January 2020 data to the February 2021, they were comparable, and the 2020 was slightly higher, and we used that as a basis for our analysis. Again, as if everybody recalls, the restrictions were put in place approximately mid-March of 2020. So, the other data we had, which was conducted just to the east here at Faraday, was in January of 2020. Given the type of use proposed here, we consulted the Institute of Transportation Engineer's Trip Generation Manual, and as detailed in the traffic reports on Table 1, we're projecting the two buildings to generate approximately 50 trips during the morning peak hour and the 54 trips during the, um, afternoon peak hour. Based on the existing, uh, roadway traffic patterns as well as the traffic movements in and out of the existing building, we assign traffic 50% to and from the west or north towards South Hope Chapel, and then 50% in the easterly direction towards Route 70. Consistent with the Ocean County Planning Board protocol, we looked at a 10-year build or 2031 design year and analyzed the site driveway with traffic growth as well as the additional traffic to be generated by the two new, uh, proposed buildings, and determined that during the morning peak hour, the site driveway exiting movements would be a level service D, and then in the afternoon a level service E with some additional delays, uh, which when, that are qualify that when we look at the 95th percentile Q included in the traffic report, it shows that during the PM peak hour, that the 95th percentile Q would be approximately 1.6 vehicles, uh, which given the fact that we have a 50-foot driveway throat, my opinion, it would be acceptable. Obviously, this is all subject to, um, Ocean County Planning Board review and relative to the driveway design. As far as the site access, and in order to provide the site distance, and I heard the board's comments about reducing the size of that front building, there is a need, and I'll be transparent, I wasn't aware there was going to be evergreens along the frontage on Whitesville Road. Lower types of vegetation is necessary in order to maximize the sight lines, because as everyone's aware of it, there is right now because of the vegetation along the site frontage and the horizontal curve on Whitesville Road, the site distance is, is substandard. We can provide the appropriate site distance with the development of that portion of the property and, uh, lower, uh, vegetation or landscaping that where 360 feet of safe stopping sight distance is required, we can provide 500 feet. So I think in, consistent with some of the board's recommendations and adjusting the, the building size, again, we can provide this, the appropriate sight lines along, um, Whitesville Road. I think a lot of the other discussion was on the parking. And inasmuch that we didn't review the existing building and the parking provided in detail, I did review the site plan as that discussion was going on, and from what I could tell, there's approximately 60 parking spaces available to the existing building, and if you take into consideration the, um, township ordinance of one space for 1,500, you would need in the range of 30 to 35 parking spaces. So again, based on my review of the existing versus, existing parking versus the existing building, uh, there's, there would be adequate parking, but as part of a next submission, we'll provide a more detailed parking analysis that relates to the existing proposed buildings.
And, and you're also going to review the, uh, parking of the proposed buildings as well, right?
Correct. As far as proposed buildings, it's my opinion that we satisfy the ordinance, but we'll look at it this entire, site as an entirety with the existing proposed. That basically concludes my testimony on the traffic analysis.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kennel, I'm not sure if you're going to take this one or not. Building one shows, um, one-way clockwise circulation, and I need to know your feelings about a vehicle entering the site and trying to get around building one. It looks to be an obtuse angle. Um, I'm not sure if the radii are sufficient to accomplish that move. It appears that the aisle, immediate, the first aisle that runs in front of building number one, parallel to Whitesville Road, it tried to line up with the center line of the drive aisle in front of the existing building perhaps, but it makes for a, an odd movement as soon as you come in the building, make that hard turn. Any thoughts on that?
I agree with you. The, the design can accommodate a, a SU-30 vehicle, a box truck, but with, you know, our, looking, going to look at alternatives to the building layout and making it smaller, we can adjust that. I mean, in just reviewing the plan, the parking spaces around building one, we exceed the town, the township ordinance. There may be an opportunity to eliminate the six, seven spaces on the south side of the building, or east side of the building, and just, and shift the building. So, uh, bottom line is, there, there's an opportunity to improve that geometry that, uh,
Thank you. Our, our concern simply was if, if someone doesn't think they can make that turn, they're going to go in the next entrance, which is one way. And then we've just, we've done a, a poor job in laying out a safe circulation pattern. I believe Councilman Fleming brought up the, the finger of existing stone in between the southerly end of the existing building and the northerly end of building number two. Understanding that we may or may not have curb in that area, um, I'm reasonably sure we could provide a better vehicle turning pattern in that area between building two and the existing building?
We can provide an alternate design. I understand what Mr. Borden was stating, that they were trying to create a, I'll say, sheltered area for that parking, I mean, for the loading days there, but obviously, um, based on the comments provided tonight, we can amend that to address the concern.
Just if, if for some reason the applicant, and I'm just saying it to you because you're doing the traffic, I know maybe you're not responsible for the onsite, but someone coming out of the most northeasternally, loading space of building two has to make a 90-degree turn, 180-degree turn, a 90-degree turn to get from the loading space to the drive aisle in front of building one. Doesn't seem quite frankly efficient. Um, so if for some reason there's a, there's a environmental or another reason for not doing that, perhaps we should get a vehicle turning movement for the most critical locations on the site if there's a re-submission to be had.
Understood.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
And, and just, uh, lastly, uh, Mr. Kennel, the, um, when you're coming in on Whitesville and that turn that, um, we were just talking about, the difficult turn that brings you around building one, you said that a box truck is, is about all that can make the move there. I'm concerned about firefighting equipment, um, whether that can also navigate that.
All right, we'll have Mr. Borden look at that.
Thank you. I, I hear you. Um, do you have any other witnesses?
Mr. Chairman, I have one additional witness. Uh, Mr. Borden has previously testified about the stormwater management, program that, um, has been designed for this project. I'd like to call Graham McFarlane, uh, Professional Design Systems, to testify as to the storm, stormwater management.
Is that all he's going to?
That is all he's going to.
With the changes that we discussed?
Yes.
I'm not sure that the stormwater management might change. Is that, you think?
Well, he'll answer when he's sworn, I guess. Mr. McFarlane, you raised your right, thank you. You're used to it. You've raised your right hand, thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, affiliation, and through the chair, brief credentials.
Uh, sure, Graham McFarlane, M.A.C.F.A.R.L.A.N.E., Professional Engineer, Principal with Professional Design Services. Uh, I've been doing this since 1987, so not quite as long as my other colleagues here, but, uh, still, I think a very long time. Uh, previously testified before this board, uh, many times, offering testimony tonight, uh, for engineering issues, specifically stormwater management design.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, to answer your, uh, your question directly first, before I get started in a, in, in overview of the project, uh, the board has requested some changes, uh, to, to the application, but those changes would not have significant changes to the overall plan for, for stormwater management. Uh, you can see on, on A2, uh, again, as Mr. Borden discussed, building one and building two, but each building will have its own, a separate, uh, stormwater management basin. So there was one up in front for building one, one in the back for, for building two. Uh, if we reduce building one or make some changes to the, to the driveway orientation or the circulation, the overall plan for stormwater management will essentially still, still be the same. Uh, that's really guided by the existing conditions on the site. There's a ridge line that runs through the site basically, uh, in, in this location, bisecting, uh, where the existing runoff is directed. Part of it is directed towards the wetlands corridor over here, closer to Whites, Whitesville Road, and, uh, a part of it is directed to the wetlands corridor in the back portion where, where building two is. So that's why the design ended up having two separate detention basins. Uh, along the front of the site, there is some drainage in Whitesville Road. There's a drainage easement dedicated to the county. They have an outfall pipe that collects runoff from Whitesville Road and pipes it through, through the site directly to the wetlands corridor. Uh, part of this application will include, uh, rerouting that pipe so it goes around, uh, proposed building number one, and will still convey the runoff properly, uh, into the, into the wetlands corridor to make sure that there's no negative impact to the drainage collection on Whitesville Road. Uh, since we're here, the, the application has been approved by the Pine Lands Commission, or I'm sorry, has received a certificate of, uh, filing by the Pine Lands Commission, uh, determined to be consistent, meaning that we are in compliance with all of their stormwater management requirements. Uh, I, I believe that this board has enough experience and is aware that the Pine Lands has their own specific criteria for stormwater management, so this plan satisfies, uh, those criteria. In, in, in essence, the, the project, the stormwater management design provides for both qualitative and quantitative control, which you've heard us speak about many times on, on other applications. Uh, the qualitative control, uh, is, is provided by each of these detention basins. They are combination infiltration detention basins, so they don't have any outlets until, uh, higher, higher level storms, which will have, will have spillways directing runoff again to the, to the wetlands corridor. We have received the review letter from, from Owen Little with some technical comments outlined in it, and will agree to address all of those comments.
Surely you can throw this testimony? Okay, any questions for this?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So, Mr. McFarlane, uh, two questions. One, I'm just, again, for purposes of, uh, future understanding, I'm trying to just reconcile, um, some of the language in Resolution 9807. I recognize that second building wasn't built. When it talks about that the applicant, um, this is related to the existing building, the act applicant connects stormwater runoff to existing county facilities. Are there any proposed changes from what was occurring in 1998?
No, that, uh, that, that language was, seems a little vague.
That's why I'm asking the question.
But there are, there are no changes, changes to propose. At the time when the original application was, was approved, we certainly did not have the straight requirement for stormwater management that we have today. Uh, the current site, the runoff is just, is just directed, uh, to the wetlands corridor primarily. Uh, we're not really proposing any changes. There's, there's no need for any changes to, uh, those existing patterns.
So it's just, and can you just describe the existing pattern of that, of that building?
Yes, uh, essentially, currently there's no, uh, there's no collection on site. So any runoff that falls just runs over the pavement, uh, into the wetlands corridor. So there's no, there's no control on, you know, nor was any required at the time that that application was approved.
And now that you're approving it, there's still, now that you're approving the entirety of the site, it's your testimony that there's no requirement to improve that sheet?
Well, correct. The, uh, the regulations require us to accommodate runoff from additional impervious surfaces. Uh, we don't, there, there's no, there's no regulation that requires, uh, the applicant to, to update or approve the existing conditions that were previously approved and were compliant with your regulations at the time that they were, uh, approved or constructed.
Mr. Chairman, just one last, uh, question. As this particular development is in the Pine Lands, and since there's some testimony that it's your desire to connect the sewer, but you can't guarantee it, would those septic systems be the nitrate systems that are generally required in Pine Lands?
To, to the extent that they would have to be for, for compliance with the, with the CMP. So if they are required to, they will.
Okay, anybody? At this time, you don't have any more witnesses?
No further witnesses.
Mr. Chairman?
At this time, I'd like to open it up to follow-up comment if somebody?
I'm, I'm sorry, very, very quickly. Uh, Mr. McFarlane, would you just speak to the, um, design exception for the perimeter curb?
I, I believe Mr. Borden indicated that we would provide the curbing in his testimony when he answered the question. I heard it, you might, may not have heard it.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll provide that.
I didn't hear.
We all. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to follow-up comment if somebody who cares to speak about this application, please step up to the microphone. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, um, I guess you have some work to do. Um, we'll have to come back here at a later date. How long do you think it's going to take you to put this all together?
Well, looking at the agenda, Mr. Chairman, um, it appears that there's, uh, open, no applications at the September 20th meeting. I think that would give us ample time to make the necessary changes, pass it past your, discuss it with your professionals, and be ready to, uh, respond to your questions.
Denise, you okay with September 20th?
Wait, wait, wait. I think it's, I think it's the Sukkot holiday, not Rosh Hashanah or Yom Kippur. Let me, let me look. I should know off the top of my head, I apologize. Yeah, so it's the, I don't know, it's the, I mean, it's an important holiday, but it's not one of the biggies, so to speak. So, um, I know Mr. Pfeffer was not, was not available. But.
Are you?
I am available. All right. I'll eat outside first.
We'll reschedule this, um, for September 20th, 2021?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, this application, uh, block 22301, lots 5, 6, and 16, uh, will be carried to the September 20th, 2021 meeting of the Jackson Towns and Planning Board with the out, without the requirement of further notice, the applicant has waived time to accede to carrying the application.
Correct.
Okay.
No, no, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, let's take a, a five-minute break. Okay, we're back to the settlement. Okay, next up, we have lots 403, lots 111, how, nobody? Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for preliminary and final, uh, site plan approval associated with a two-story, uh, 26,300-square-foot general and medical office building. Um, the project, um, is located in a, um, the Jug Handle area adjacent to Brewer's Bridge Road. It, um, is variance-free as far as the, um, HC zoning, um, requirements are concerned. Um, the applicant is requesting, uh, a waiver from an environmental impact statement, so some, um, some testimony from the applicant in support of that waiver request. The project will connect the public water and sewer. We should have some testimony from the applicant regarding, um, the proposed operations. Probably most importantly is, um, Probably most importantly is, with the medical office, unless there's three independent practitioners, there is a higher parking standard for that. So some testimony from the applicant is how can we be assured that we actually do get the three independent practitioners, and that more is related to the parking requirements. The applicant has provided a traffic impact study, so the applicant should provide some testimony from the board regarding the findings of that, of the traffic study. Brewers Bridge Road is a county roadway facility, so review and approval of the access design will be with the county. The circulate, or the driveway off of Brewers Bridge Road connects the internal circulation aisles, and appears adequate turning radio having provided throughout the site. The project will require a waiver for off-street, I'm sorry, it's compliant with the ordinance requirements as far as parking goes, provided that we have some testimony regarding the three practitioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a report dated July 22nd of this year. Property is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone. In discussion with the applicant's attorney and planner, I think we're going to get some instant testimony regarding what the uses proposed are, and they may straighten out some of the design waivers that may be required. So I'm going to stop there. If we come back and we get stuck at anything that's in my report, I'll bring it back to the board's attention.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, attorney on behalf of the applicant. As indicated, we're seeking construction, preliminary, final site plan approval to construct an approximately 26,000 two-story office building. The application did indicate office slash medical. There's some discrepancy as to if medical office is permitted. We are not seeking any medical office at this time. That, I believe, is what Mr. Peters was referencing. With that, we have no parking variances. We have excess parking, and we're just seeking professional office space, which is a permitted use. We have pretty much a by right application, no variances. One of the reports, I apologize, I don't recall which report it was, indicated that we had a, we have a garbage in the front setback. However, I have handed out, and it's on everyone's desk, revised plan. The only thing that that revises is the location of the refuse area. Went from the front of the building to the rear of the building, and the second page of that, I'll mark that as A1 by Mr. Gertner, and the second page of that attachment just shows the turning radius that the garbage trucks can get to the rear of the building to get to the garbage and can, and leave the site.
And that'll be A2.
And that'll be A2, yes. Thank you very much. The only other question regarding a possible variance would be for an existing sign that's on site, that's there today. The applicant would like to keep that sign and just clean it up a little bit, and we'll have some testimony as far as that. We do have four witnesses this evening. We have our planner, our engineer, our architect, and our traffic. I hope it's a very straightforward testimony. I don't think anybody's going to be very, is going to be lengthy in any way. This is an existing site, as I'm sure everyone, it was a funeral parlor. It's been closed for some years. It's been vacant. We're looking, again, the waiver from the EIS is because the site is already built. We're just taking down that building and putting in a new building. We'll hear testimony as far as that. Hearing also the last, the last application, I have just put up the rendering, which I'll mark that as A3. We do have the architect who could talk about it in any of the details, but just so the board can see, the, we are seeking to build a nice, sorry, for the site. At this time, if I can, call my first witness, our planner, Ms. Christine Cofone, who indicated her testimony should be minutes in length, so.
Ms. Cofone, you've raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear, you got to pick up the mic, though, I apologize, too fast. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, and testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kind of give us your full name, spell your last, and through the chair briefly your credentials?
Certainly. It's Christine Nazaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I have testified before this board in excess of 400 and something others, and I have been practicing for about 25 years as a planning consultant. I am a special master in about 30 different municipalities, and I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. I am, yes. There, actually, there's only two states that require a planning license. Yes, only two. There's an AICP, a national planning license, and I have that license as well, and my licenses are current and valid. No, I was going to say Michigan.
I think it's Oregon, because I could practice in 48 of 50 states.
Well, if you had your AICP, Mr. Gertner, do you have your AICP?
No, I don't.
I didn't think so. Yes, you have to have your AICP. So this is a relatively conforming application. As Mr. Peters indicated, there was some questions raised in his review letter as to whether medical or professional office was permissible in the HC district where the subject property is located. So we are proposing only professional office now, and we were able to design out the variance where we previously were showing that refuse area in the front. You're going to see, or if you actually have, Mr. Pfeffer provided some exhibits that show that we've moved it to the back of the building, and we're also landscaping it, so it's in a conforming location. So we're good there. We conform with all of the bulk requirements, and the use is permitted in the HC zone as we're proposing professional office, which makes my job a whole lot easier, because we are now the only variance, inasmuch as if you deem it is a variance, I think we could make an argument that you don't need the variance because the sign exists, is to continue that sign that is on the subject property today. It is conforming with respect to the height, is conforming with respect to the area. What it doesn't conform to is the setback. It is a non-conforming setback. So it's in a non-conforming setback location. We are not proposing to change the setback of it. We are proposing to just change the sign to simply, you know, indicate the proposed office building as opposed to the use that exists on the property today. So I do believe the board can grant the variance under the C1 and C2 statutory criteria. The C1 criteria, which are the hardship criteria, because one of the criteria under the land use law for the grant of a variance are lawful pre-existing structures existing on a piece of property. So that's how I think the board can invoke the C1. In the absence of any hardship criteria, though, if you weren't convinced, the board can grant a C2 or a flexible C if you find that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced. I think there are a number of purposes that would be advanced by allowing that sign to stay. Certainly, A, promoting the general welfare is advanced, particularly when you look at one of the more recent objectives in your master plan, which is to encourage commercial development. Commercial zoning districts in the township, in particular, the areas in the highway commercial districts, are significantly underdeveloped and underutilized. The township prioritize the areas it wants commercial development and identify and consider strategies to encourage development in those areas. So that's why I think the board can rely on promoting the general welfare, because having signage allows us to promote our businesses, which is completely consistent with the HC zone as well as the master plan. But I also think the board can rely on Criteria H, which talks about promoting the free flow of traffic. Obviously, as planners, we know that signs are important for advertising. We want our businesses to be able to advertise, and your ordinance allows for signage in this, in this zone. We're actually consistent with the size and the height of the signage, just not the setback location. But we also want signage to direct the motoring public, to let them know that they've arrived at the proper location. So the signage, I think, would advance Criteria H of the municipal land use law. We have, statutorily, only have to satisfy one or more of the purposes, but I've cited A and H in order to substantiate the C2 criteria. So rather, whether or not you're invoking the C1 or C2 criteria, we have an obligation to demonstrate to you as a board that there's no substantial detriment if the board were to move favorably on the variance. Given the sign has existed in this location a long time, and the master plan calls for revitalization of the commercial areas, and this is a commercial area, I certainly see no substantial detriment to allowing the applicant to continue the sign at this location. With that being said, I think we substantiate our burden of proof for the grant of the variance, and I have nothing further on direct.
Ms. Cofone, you've had an opportunity to review Mr. Peters' report. Is there anything else in the report, or is there anything in the report that we cannot, the applicant can't address or meet, or do you disagree with?
There's nothing in his report that I disagree with. I'm not sure that I agree with the interpretation that it's a used variance, if it's medical, but there is nothing, since we've, since we've tabled that discussion and we're only doing professional office, there's nothing that I take exception to. And this is Mr. Peters', is the May 26th letter? Is that the right, am I looking at the right date? Yes. Yeah, so there's nothing in there that I take exception to. I think he might have made a recommendation that we provide some sidewalks and a number of other things that we can certainly comply with. We went through the letter, and there was nothing else in that letter that's objectionable or problematic for our team. You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman? I think we'd heard testimony about the existing sign, that the height's okay, the area's okay, and the setback is non-conforming?
Correct. The height is 13 feet, 13.5, and the ordinance allows 16. The area, if you look at section, I think the area would be allowed to be, the way I read your ordinance, and I'll just pull that up for a second here. The way I read your ordinance at section 244-207, I think it's 25, 26, for less, you're allowed to have the following distances from the right-of-way. For a sign area that's 26 to 75 feet, the setback is required to be 25 feet, and we're setback 17 feet, so that's the non-conformity.
That's all I needed, thank you.
Yes, okay, great.
Short answer to your question would be no. The sign's there now. There's, there's curbing there now. The sign's been there for however long the new portion of the right-to-be funeral home was there. It just, I wanted to make sure that we had the correct relief that was required so that when they go to get their zoning permit, it's correctly noted, because it wasn't on the plans that were originally submitted. And there may have been, although I don't know, other than going to the county, it may have been a permitted or conforming sign prior to right-of-way dedication for that area up to the intersection, when County Line Road was widened and when the traffic light was put in. So I just don't know that, but I think it was important to note what the existing condition is, what the requirement is. That way they don't get stuck post-board approval over at zoning or anywhere else. And again, the setback, we meet that requirement.
I think the next witness?
Yes, all right, correct.
Anybody else?
You could recommend that as the environmental chair, right?
Thank you. Our next, our next witness will be our engineer, Mr. Obermann.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kind of give us your full name, spell your last, affiliation, and then through the chairman, he'll briefly vordere you regarding your qualifications?
My name's Richard Obermann, O-B-E-R-M-A-N, and I'm a professional engineer that works for New Lines Engineering, 315 Monmouth Avenue, Lakewood, New Jersey. And I graduated Penn State University, 1978. I've been practicing over 40 years engineering, licensed in the state of New Jersey, and professional engineer, as well as all the states bordering New Jersey, and I've been many boards.
Mr. Obermann, if you can, just walk us through the project and address any questions or concerns in the report.
As stated earlier, we're right on Brewers Bridge Road, and what borders the back and side of the property, obviously, is the jug handle from County Line Road, and that's the County Route 526. We're on the south side of Brewers Bridge, posing 26,000 square foot plus or minus office space with 141 parking spaces. Stormwater management, we're going to connect to the public utilities, both water and sewer. And we have, across the street, businesses, next to us also highway commercial businesses type of facilities, and there is a residential property to the rear and to the side, but we're separated from that property by the jug handle, both those properties. We have provided landscaping on all sides of the property also.
If you can, walk through Mr. Peters' report, are there any items that we cannot address?
No, we didn't have any items that were, that I felt we couldn't address from his letter. I think we can meet anything that he had discussed. He discussed some things about lighting on the site and the spillover, and some items, small items about stormwater management, and landscaping things. I think everything can be addressed in, you know, in the waiver, not in the waiver letter, but in the review letter.
Mr. Obermann, you're sort of wavering from, because...
Okay, sorry.
To address one of the questions from one of the board members, do you know, have we received any response from the fire commissioners?
No, not yet.
A submission was made?
Yes.
Thank you. Board, is there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if they addressed our report as it related to traffic, but in our report dated July 22nd, on page five, under Site Plan Issues C, is traffic, circulation, parking, and loading. Comments three, four, five, and six are waivers, and they're waivers because of the setback distance for the parking, using main circulation aisles as parking. They're not fixing those things, they're asking for waivers. So I'd like them to at least get the testimony right so we get the resolution right, because otherwise, they're going to, they're going to come back and they're not going to be compliant. They also have comments in the...
I believe we have a traffic engineer that will address that.
Traffic expert, yes.
But the, I do believe the one thing that is a design issue is the driveway entrance is not 100 feet, like you said in your waiver. We, we have, we're about, we're about 50 feet back with the driveway that has access throughout the site, and we do have parking all along through the whole site, too. So that parking is a waiver when you have it on major circulation driveway as well as, you know, the entrance driveway.
We also note a waiver request under landscaping, section, page six, under landscaping, comment two, for additional plantings in the end islands. They're going to provide them, great.
Yep.
On page seven, under solid waste, comments F1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, require waivers, again, if they're going to provide them, great.
On number one, we provided the exhibit showing removing the location of the refuse, so that no longer will be a required waiver.
But that's another waiver, is we don't have the 25 feet away from the budding adjacent residential property. We're actually having 20 feet, and we are providing plantings along there.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Now I'll call my next witness, Mr. Scott Henry. No, I'll call my next witness, Mr. Scott Kennel. Mr. Kennel, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear, affirm that information, questions, comments, or testimony about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And again, you've gone through this at the previous hearing just today, but for this hearing, full name, et cetera.
Correct, Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquon. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, with over 35 years of traffic and transportation planning experience, having testified before this board in over 100 municipalities as well, has been qualified in New Jersey Superior Corps as a traffic expert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennel, you heard a few of the questions, and you're familiar with the site. If you can, just address any questions or concerns, or you can go through your statement.
Well, I guess one of the main concerns deals with the driveway throat and the municipal ordinance that requires 100 feet. We're providing 40 to 50 feet of a 50-foot throat. Based on our analysis, it was determined that the site driveway would operate a level service B for the morning and a level service C in the afternoon. The 95th percentile Q is less than one vehicle, which would be approximately 20 feet. So it's my opinion that the design as presented will not have a negative impact on onsite circulation, given the level of service and the length of the throat we have, based on our analysis under full build. And the full build condition is based on a portion of the building being medical office, which provides a higher traffic generation. So the fact that we're now 100% professional office, the analysis presented is a worst-case conservative analysis. And the only other comment, I guess it deals with onsite circulation, it's been designed to accommodate the relocation of the refuse to the east side of the building, and the parking for, that's being provided, meets and exceeds the township ordinance or supply.
That is it?
Unless there's other questions?
Anyone?
Thank you.
I have one last witness, I have the architect here. Again, if the board has no questions of it, again, it's office space, we can call him, have him sworn in, and address that quickly. Just for the application purposes, it indicated, the application indicated that it'd be up to 10 office suites. If you look at the architectural plans, they're approximately showing around 2,000 square foot units. Obviously, it would be up to 10, meaning so somebody may take two or three units and combine them, but there'd be no more than 10 actual tenants in the building, that's spread out over the two floors. I do have Mr. Flannery here, if anybody has any questions, I can swear I'm in, or we can skip this up to the board.
Does he have any testimony to provide?
We'll swear I'm in, and we'll go through it quickly.
Thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear, affirm information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey, registered architect. I've been licensed for over 20 years. I've testified with including Jackson. We have a rendering of the building, it's a beautiful, modern office building, it'll be compatible with the area. Ernie had an architectural comment, we do have an elevator, and that will be labeled on the plan. The office uses will be professional office. As Adam indicated, we've shown five suites per floor, it's roughly 2,000 square feet per floor.
Is there a basement? No basement.
No basement, not a slab.
Yes, sir.
Rivers Consulting?
We hadn't anticipated that, but certainly, as we get to construction documents, solar would certainly fit there. It's a flat roof, that solar would fit well.
Yeah, I don't know if the applicant's seat can get...
Okay, anyone else? Yes.
I don't see any division on offices. I must admit, I don't have that issue. I just wanna make sure those walls are all going to be constructed at the time of construction. It won't be just open area.
Correct.
Correct. The plan was submitted that showed about five suites per floor, and it shows the hallways, the bathrooms. There isn't much detail on the suites, because when we find the professionals are gonna be in those suites, you know, where the desks are and where all that information is.
And there, I, yes, thank you so much. Those walls are all going to be walls?
Yes.
Not accordion or anything.
Correct. Correct.
So there'll be no meetings, meeting area.
No common, if you ask, no common area, no.
No common meeting area, correct.
Right, there may be a tenant or two that may want to take more than one unit, and they'll reconfigure possibly that. Exactly. But yeah, no, there's not a common work office, it's, yes.
Anyone? Okay, let's open it up to public comment.
No problem, Christine.
The sign we're asking for, please, I don't even have a comment.
Correct. It's on the existing survey, it should be on, there should be a sheet of the original plan.
Do you want to do the parking lot square now?
Yes.
Not parking lot, I'm letting you, right? Right now, I'm building a wall.
Right, but that section of the area is not changing.
We're not moving the sign.
Right. Understood.
Yes.
And just for clarification, if you look at Sheet 2 of 19 on the existing condition plan, it is...
Yeah, it's not easy to see.
Let me see, the parking lot, there's a grass area in front of the parking lot?
So it was, essentially, it would be to the east of the new driveway, or where the driveway is going to be for that parking lot. It would be due east of the driveway, if you're looking, just to get yourself oriented. You're welcome.
Rather clarify it now. And those are all the witnesses we have.
Okay. Just have one question, I'm sorry for the traffic engineer.
Sure, Scott.
Traffic professional, see. Coming, making a left-hand turn in here, do you see any problem with that coming down Brewers Bridge and then making a left to come in?
Well, again, it's a movement that exists today, it's where the driveway is designed, and we're approximately the same location. There is adequate pavement, as I recall, that someone could bypass a left turner. That is something that'll be reviewed by the county. I can say that, based on this plan, from what I've reviewed, sightlines will be improved for people exiting, because right now, we have a lot of vegetation around that jug handle, and that'll be improved with this site improvement. Again, since there is no place to make a U-turn anywhere else, other than making the direct left, that's a movement that we had considered in the site plan design. Obviously, again, it's still subject to Ocean County review and approval.
And there is a driveway directly across from this one?
That's correct.
Does that also pose a problem?
We analyzed, the analysis we presented to the board treated that as a four-way intersection, and that's where we came up with a B-level service in the morning and a C for the afternoon. Again, it's a similar type use, it's not, from my observation, it's not a high traffic generator such as a retail use. So I would expect it to operate safely and efficiently.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment, I see we have a lot of public here. Anyone wishing to speak about this application, please step up to the microphone. Seeing no one? More favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we close, there was one item, I don't know if it made it in our reports, I just want to ask Mr. Pfeffer for the record. On the existing survey, there shows an exception number eight, a utility easement to the county of Ocean, parentheses blanket in nature, and there's another set of parentheses that says "to be abandoned." Do you know if that's been done yet? I know they've had conversations with the county. The county was looking into just to confirming, they couldn't figure out why they had this easement either. And we already talked to them, they indicated they're gonna agree to vacate it, but it's, they're just fine during the review process.
Can we just get that? I want to get that on the record and then make it a condition of the resolution, so that someone shows us a piece of paper at some point before we sign the plans.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right, guys. Need further discussion?
Just to sum up real quickly, Mr. Chairman, as indicated, we have approximately 26,000 to shy 300 square foot, two-story office building on a slab, all professional. We have approximately, we have, not approximately, we have 141 parking spaces, no variances, nice ratable, nice-looking building. And we would ask the board to vote in the affirmative to approve this application with any of the conditions that we had spoken about.
Which would, Mr. Chairman, specifically include the variance for the sign location?
Yes.
To maintain it, the waiver of the production of the EIS, anything else specifically?
Hey, take good notes, I'm sure there's something.
Yeah, I really gotta speak for our...
We would agree as a condition during resolution compliance, that we'd have to comply with any of the requests.
That's fine. All right, any others? I'm sorry? If you like?
I would move to accept, given the complying nature and with the consideration of all the things to which we have agreed.
Got it. Did we discuss sidewalks? I don't think we did, I think there was a note, I think someone testified sidewalks. Whatever Ernie recommended, we would comply with.
Sidewalks, because it goes to readers.
Yeah, I don't think there's any sidewalks there now.
There'll be sidewalks, because of readers.
There's no sidewalks, you have to tell the government. There aren't any, all the way down. More than a brick, but there's no sidewalk. Okay, so contribution to the...
We would...
I guess.
Whatever the board would like, we will do.
We'll work it out with our professionals. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. What vote?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Assuming a sidewalk contribution, yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I know we held resolutions and meeting minutes. By chance, did we pay the voucher for our recording secretary?
Oh, how thoughtful of you, Mr. Peters.
I know where my bread gets buttered when I leave the meeting, so.
Do I? Do I? You can skip that. Boss over that.
I move we pay the...
I am so sorry. All bills as presented. Mitt?
I move we pay...
All bills as presented?
Okay. And we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to close?
Sure.
We have a motion to close. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.